Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee of -- school committee meeting of Wednesday, May 29th. We have one agenda item, which is to talk and deliberate about the next superintendent from the final three candidates, as well as a possible vote. Michelle, I'm sorry, the agenda -- public participation?
Excuse me?
Is there public participation on the --
No.
Okay.
It's just this.
So, thank you, everyone, for being here. What I thought that I would do is first see if, as a committee, if we could narrow it down to two candidates. So, what I -- and if, again, if the committee is open to this. What I'd like to do is hand out a piece of paper, ask each committee member to write their top two candidates on that piece of paper, hand it back in to me. If we do have consensus on two candidates, then we will deliberate about those two candidates on who possibly could be our next superintendent. Any questions or concerns about that before we get going?
No.
Just a point of order. We'd have to put our own name and our choice, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Remember to write your name on it. Why are you folding it up?
Oh, Mike, come on. It's gonna be public information in two minutes.
Let's pass a note. Do you want to pass it out to anyone in the audience? Michelle, do I need to read the names and their choices, or just?
Yes.
Yes? Okay?
See, Mike.
All right, so I'll -- okay. Cliff's Sylvia Shaver-Hood and Francos. Mike Flaherty, Elise Francos and Kimberly Shaver-Hood. Jeff Francos and Shaver-Hood. Kim Fons, Kimberly Shaver-Hood and Elise Francos. And Rhonda Buggan, Elise Francos and Kimberly Shaver-Hood. So, if the committee is okay with it, since there is consensus that these would be the two final candidates, that those are the candidates that we will discuss tonight. Okay? All right. So, I'm open to suggestions, but what I thought that I would do is not call on anyone specifically, but to ask that each committee member talk about the -- what you feel are the strengths and weaknesses of each one of the candidates, and we'll kind of go around from there. We'll then see if any additional discussion, if we would like to have anybody ask any questions of each other, and then see if we would like to call for us to do the same thing, and see if we do have consensus on a candidate. Is the committee okay with that? Okay. So, would anybody like to go first? Okay. Jeff?
Just some quick opening comments. First of all, I'd like to compliment our chairman, Rhonda Buggan, on a process that has been thoughtful, open, and inclusive, and has effectively used modern technology to minimize costs. Second, and I feel particularly strongly about this, my compliments to the screening committee of parents, educators, and business leaders, who provided outstanding input into this important and difficult decision. Finally, a word of caution about the ability of any one person to make dramatic improvements in any enterprise. Public education in general, and Wareham Public Schools in particular, is not broken. There are many outstanding individuals who have made and continue to make public education their passion and careers. To describe the system in which they practice their professions in such a derogatory term is an insult to their efforts on behalf of children, and grossly oversimplifies the problem. On the other hand, Wareham Public Schools do need to continue to improve, and the person hired to lead that effort must do so, and be held accountable if he or she fails to do so. Continuous, positive, and incremental change that directly benefits Wareham's children and increases their likelihood of becoming successful independent adults must occur, and I hope will be rewarded by Wareham citizens with an increased willingness to invest their tax dollars in public education. With respect to the now two candidates, Dr. Elise Francos is undoubtedly a major contributor to the success of the Old Rochester system, which for an extended period of time has produced high-achieving students, but with average student growth. My problems with her candidacy for superintendent of public schools fall into two categories: her lack of experience with a "buck stops here" position, and my inability to believe in her ability to effectively cope with a loss of over $2,000 per year per student in funding. I found her answer to my question about the differences between a senior staff position and a principal or superintendent to be superficial and demeaning to those individuals who must make very difficult decisions every day that only they can make. While I can believe that Dr. Francos is an effective grant writer who brings many dollars to the Old Rochester system, an overreliance on grants makes an educational system financially fragile, and is not a substitute for an operating budget based on sufficient taxpayer dollars and state aid. Ms. Kimberly Shaver-Hood is a candidate who brings a significant number of strengths to a public education system that will need all of them. Instead of having to cope with a loss of per pupil funding, Ms. Shaver-Hood will have the benefit of almost $2,000 more per student per year to implement her ideas. And she will need those dollars, as Wareham's student population appears to be somewhat more challenging than that of Blackstone-Milville. On the other hand, in the important area of long-term student achievement, Ms. Shaver-Hood has demonstrated the kind of continuous improvement that makes me believe she can do it in Wareham. As just one example, Wareham and Blackstone-Milville were both doing poorly in 2003, with only 21% and 23% of their eighth-grade math students proficient or better. Wareham has certainly improved its numbers, now at a level of 40%. The latest numbers for Blackstone-Milville are 62% of their eighth-grade math students proficient or better in math. Why have I chosen middle-school math? It was in 2003 that Ms. Shaver-Hood took over the position of middle-school principal, and has been directly or indirectly responsible for those eighth-grade math students ever since. In addition to her proven record of being able to improve student performance in a frugal town, I believe the personal and educational references that demonstrate a person who is truly committed to students, believes in being an active participant in this town, and has very high expectations of students, educators, and herself. I strongly urge support for Ms. Kimberly Shaver-Hood for the next superintendent of Wareham Public Schools.
Thank you. Would you like to go next?
I don't have a prepared statement. I echo what my colleague, Mr. Swett, said. I think this is probably -- actually, it is one of the toughest decisions, and I'm happy with either candidate when we get down to the final two. I think they both bring something different to the table. But from the beginning of the process, after the screening of the resumes and applications, and then the first interview, Kimberly Shaver-Hood was ranked one or two by me throughout the entire process. And after the site visit to Blackstone-Milville, and talking to numerous people, over 20 people, and getting a background, I found out that she's very, very involved from the ground level up, which started with building a new middle school, introducing new programs in Blackstone-Milville, and same issues that we have as far as budget, money is an issue down there. She has a special relationship with the students, which is kind of different. Her office is, I think, two doors down the hall from the principal. Some might find that intimidating, but in the interviews, we found that they found it comforting, a nice collaboration. As far as Elise Francos, she has done a lot with fundraising. She's active in the community in Wareham, as well as the Old Rochester district. Some of my concerns naturally were basically not having that experience as a principal and/or superintendent. I understand the title is Assistant Superintendent, but that ties into superintendent of curriculum. I guess you could have any title you want, and that's not in any way demeaning to her, but I don't think it has -- she has that experience to step in Wareham, to be your first rodeo, to have a superintendent, and make this your first district. So, it's a tough decision. I rely on a lot of people in the community, talking to many people to get their feel, and what I found out is, almost overwhelmingly, they were supporting the same candidate as I was, and I found that scary. But I think that's a good thing, because everybody looks for something different. So, I also, right now, we're gonna have a private vote, but I think my candidate has stayed in the top two all through the process.
Thank you. Cliff, Mike? It's either one of you.
Name somebody.
I wasn't going to, but -- all right.
I thought long and hard about this. This is the most important decision that the Wareham School Committee has to make. We are going to choose an individual that's gonna lead our school district forward, and to provide the leadership that is necessary to handle some very, very important problems that we have in the town of Wareham. Not only fiscal problems, but also educational problems. I think both candidates have a skill set that could benefit Wareham. However, as always, you have to make a decision on what you think is best for the district. And what I'm going to say, it does not demean any candidate, but what I'm going to say is what my perceptions are of the strengths and weaknesses. Ms. Kimberly Shaver-Hood certainly has had the position. She's been a superintendent, and she has a very, very good reputation, and she's very well-liked by many of the stakeholders in Blackstone-Milville. However, I don't feel that she has an extensive background in curriculum. I don't feel that she has the skill set to get the kind of funding that we're gonna need in Wareham. Melville -- Blackstone-Milville still is among one of the lowest per pupil expenditures in the state of Massachusetts, and I feel that an effective superintendent is one that will be able to bridge that gap. I also feel that where we may have the potential of avoiding the curriculum office, we need someone as superintendent that has a very, very strong curriculum background. I think that Dr. Francos has demonstrated her expertise, not only in curriculum, but also in fiscal matters. Now, there has been some discussion on whether or not she has been a principal or not. I suggest that there are many superintendents functioning today throughout the Commonwealth that have never been a principal. As a matter of fact, her superintendent at Old Rochester has never been a principal. So, I think that we have to look at the mindset, we have to look at the skill set, and we have to look at what they bring to the table. Based on my interviews in Old Rochester, based on her two interviews here in Wareham, I thought that she nailed her interviews. She was forthright, she provided pertinent information, she did not hesitate, and she, as far as I'm concerned, hit every single one of the questions head-on. She provided the kind of information and background information that was necessary. For one, my question was based on a new philosophy of success called mindset, and she not only knew what I was talking about, she knew the author of the book, and she had information about that new philosophy. So, based on a lot of factors, but primarily on what she's accomplished in Old Rochester, their test scores, and I know that their demographics are different, but I think where she lives in Marion and has been exposed to Wareham in so many different forms, through word of mouth, through media, she has a handle on Wareham, she has a handle on the problems of Wareham. So, I am supporting Dr. Francos for the next superintendent.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you. I find myself in the good position of being able to support either one of these finalists, these two women, 110% either way. I just compiled some pros and cons, and I'll go through them, and I'll tell you who I ultimately picked. But I echo many of the remarks made by everybody here so far tonight. I'll start with Dr. Elise Francos on the pros. She is already a part of this community. She --
I want you to speak up, Mike.
Oh, sorry. I'll speak up. She is already a part of this community. She is a member of the library, the church, she lives three miles down the road. She is a consummate professional, no doubt about it. She's very well-read, she knows all the latest industry trends and practices. The term that came up during the site visits that really caught my attention is that she brings a level of gravitas. And what I mean by that is, you folks have brought -- we all talk about the Mass Corps, and she helped write the Mass Corps. I mean, that's no small feat. One of the people -- we go on about how brilliant she is, yet diplomatic, she can finesse so many different situations. She's just so positive that she's very hard to dislike, and that definitely came through in talking with her. But when it comes to results, what I saw was that in one year, this came in the last interviews, in one year, in Metropoiet, it became an accommodation school, which means it exceeded the Level 1 requirements, and that happened in one year. In that same one year, the Old Rochester Memorial Elementary School went from Level 2 to Level 1, and those are the sort of results I was looking for. As far as cons, the only thing I could really pick up on, other than people saying she could be pretty verbose, was that she had very little collective bargaining experience, and that was just where she was in her career. That was the next step in her career, in talking with the superintendent there, that she was gonna get more involved in that. Now, onto my notes for Ms. Shaver-Hood, pros and cons. Yes, I'll just come right out and say it, that I love when she said that teaching kids is our business. She clearly, clearly, clearly puts kids first, and she's unapologetic about it, and that I really liked about her. You know, a lot of people, a lot of people here, a lot of the candidates, a lot of people in education, you know, talk the talk, but she really seemed to walk the walk when it came to that. She doesn't have her doctorate, but she will shortly. She's finished all her coursework, and she's just doing her dissertation. Where she's had to cut so much, she wears so many different hats, you know, so she's already doing so many different roles there already, and she has the experience of so many different, hands-on experience of so many different positions in that central office. So, she's very well-rounded in that respect. As far as cons, I share the concerns that some people had, that she might be trying to escape her district. That seems to be worse off financially than ours is. That does concern me. But I have to echo, I was looking for the right words, and I wanna echo what Mr. Swett said, and she has that "buck stops here" attitude about her, and I didn't really get that from the others. And that's really what I think we're gonna -- what we need, we need that. We need decisiveness, we need clarity, not nebulous jargon. So, I'm just trying to make sure I covered it all. That's it. So, I am, like I said, I could've supported either one of them 110%, but I'm gonna go for Ms. Shaver-Hood.
Thank you, everyone. I do have to say that I think that what everyone had to say today, along the whole entire process, I think you got definitely the best out of both candidates. I do have to say that I didn't have the privilege of going to the site visits of Kimberly Shaver-Hood or to Dr. Elise Francos, like all of you did. So, I did have to hear the feedback of the site visits, as well as really dig down and listen, and ask the questions that I needed to ask during the interview process. What I got out of it was, with Dr. Francos, someone who understands curriculum, understands what kids need to be able to succeed when it comes to curriculum, someone who's very, very passionate, also someone that is in a district that does have a different population than Wareham does. But her ability to work on, just from a curriculum standpoint, what is exactly needed and fight for that was, it came through, and everything that she said, and Cliff probably knew every single word that she said. There were some times that I was a little bit lost, only because I'm not as deep into the curriculum as she was. But there's no mistake that she has just unbelievable knowledge and ability to be able to make sure that the right curriculum is in that district. I share my other colleagues' concerns, just when it does come to her, the leadership factor. She hasn't been in that lead role, and I think some could make the argument that she has, in different aspects of her role, played the leadership role when it came to funding, or when it came to collective bargaining, or when it came to different aspects of the school system. But it's basically that figurehead, that person that is out there with, that at the end of the day, it ends with her. And that is a concern, especially with Wareham and where we are right now, with the fiscal issues that we have, and where we are as a Level 3 district, and, you know, we can go on and on about some of the things we discussed here. But experience did weigh heavily on me, and would I like to take a chance? Absolutely. But I am just, and I know with anything, we are, after our due diligence, we are still taking a leap of faith. But for me, experience was something that was very important, a very important factor in my decision. When it came to Kimberly Shaver-Hood, she was, in, you know, full disclosure, she wasn't even on my radar when we went through the first interview process. I mean, I ranked her very low, and the main reason was because, in one of the questions she answered, the reason why she wants to leave the district's had to do with the money issue. And I said, "Well, that, well, then, this is not the right district for you." But, again, the fair process that we went through, and going through the matrix, she did, and I'm happy that she was, she did become one of the five candidates that went in front of the interview community, as well as us. But, again, that really stuck with me. So, as we went through the interviews, and, you know, I'm sure that the folks that did the site visit did the same thing, and I got some of the feedback, I found that it really wasn't so much about her inability to get the funding that was needed, or that that was the reason why she was leaving. It was that she was looking for a challenge, she was looking for that next district to be able to continue the work that she's been able to do in Blackstone-Milville. But I think the thing that sealed it for me was the last interview, and that the overall theme, over and over and over again, was not only the statement that we need to raise the bar in children first, and that we have to hold parents, teachers, administrators, children accountable, but it was the examples that she used on how she got that done in her district. And it was someone that did have these proven results that kept me interested, and kept me there. I felt that she's approachable, which is very, very needed in this community. I think that having a superintendent that people feel comfortable, of course, going through the chain of command, but feel comfortable with expressing ideas, and expressing their concerns, and having somebody address them, I felt that she was very, very approachable. And I felt, you know, lastly, that she was a great communicator. So, those are the reasons why, again, both candidates I was impressed with, but I do have to say that when I just thought about what this district needs, that Kimberly Shaver-Hood did stand out for me. So, I'd like to ask from the committee whether additional comments or questions from other committee members, or, you know, if we would like to have a discussion about anything anyone had said. I want this to, for everyone, to feel that we have been able to debate this, to talk about this, and to try to get to a consensus.
Now, let's vote.
Yes.
Further comment?
Yes, of course.
I did forget, I did wanna echo what Mr. Fons had said about, you know, talking to people in the community. I talked to a bunch of people in the community, and the ones who watched this, almost uniformly, they were for Ms. Shaver-Hood, to my surprise, you know, and I thought there'd be a mix, but no, it was pretty lopsided toward Ms. Shaver-Hood. And also, in addition to everything that we've had, to all the data and documents that we've had, they've got a, the Blackville, the Blackstone-Milville District has their own dedicated, you know, YouTube feed, and I've been watching slews upon slews of her meetings. And like you, Ms. Chair, at the beginning of this process, Ms. Shaver-Hood was barely made my top five, and didn't make my top three, but she won me over between her interviews and watching her inaction at her own school committee meetings, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Seeing that most, or four of the members pretty much said who they support, I don't think that we need to have a written ballot, and it should be in the form of a motion that I would be prepared to make, if acceptable.
Okay. Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee appoint Kim Shaver-Hood as the next superintendent of the Wareham Public Schools.
Can he, I think, go into negotiation?
Into negotiations.
To be the next superintendent?
Right.
Second.
Do you have that, Michelle?
Appoint and go into negotiations?
I think, you know, just go into negotiations
Correct.
To appoint Kimberly Shaver-Hood as the next superintendent of the Wareham School District. Okay, Kenny made the motion. Jeff seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Four, one, zero. Is there any other business that the committee, or any other comments that the committee would like to make first?
Because I think you never know with the negotiation process, time may be of the essence. Do you think it's advisable for you to either seek the authority to personally begin negotiations with Ms. Shaver-Hood, or would you like a subcommittee to do that with you? I think we just need to move forward on that, so that you or somebody has the authority to proceed.
Yes, and I'm going to ask two members, thank you for bringing that up, I'd like to ask two members to go and to take that to the next step. I'd like to ask two members to, to go and to take that to the next step and to, to start negotiations, just because I know from a time standpoint, I'd like this to happen, if you could just report back to me. But if possible, I'd like to have Cliff Sylvia and Jeff Swett.
No.
Okay. So can I ask for members that would like to be part, I would like two members to be part of the interview, I'm sorry, for the contract negotiations with Kimberly Shaverhood?
Ms. Chair, I think everyone's very busy, but in my opinion, I think it's very important that the chair is part of that.
Okay.
And I would suggest yourself and Mr. Swett leave that negotiation, unless Mr. Flaherty wants to join you.
I would have, but I like your idea better.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate that feedback. Alright, so it would be Jeff and I going into contract negotiations with Kimberly Shaverhood for the new superintendent of the Wareham School System. Do we need a motion and a vote on that?
No, you can appoint them.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any other business? I'll take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.